Okay, welcome to the regular Board of Education minutes. From Beverly Hills, the school district, today is June 14th, 2022. We are going to go into our study session. To discuss the budget.
Thank you, President Oils, members of the board, superintendent cabinet. I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. So we're going to spend some time over the next few minutes to talk about our revenue for next year. Some program expansion or enhancement. Kind of the general cost of doing business and why I think they're costing more. We're going to talk about the state budget and some local considerations. So let's jump into revenue. So as the board knows and the community knows, we are not an LCFF district or Local Patrol Funding Formula District. We are a community funded district. And what does that mean? You can see here, three different kinds of districts. The one on the left is a district that has low property taxes and they're majority funded through state aid. A middle district, a high property tax district, a one that doesn't quite meet a community funded level. Those would be districts in our neighborhood, kind of like Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach. They have very high property taxes, but they're not community funded. And then on the right hand side, you see community funded districts, used to be called basic aid districts. What that means is we get our property taxes in and we get to keep the excess property taxes, which is a good thing for us as a school district.
Can I just run that to what MSA is?
That is the minimum state aid. So that's a great question. The term basic aid comes because the state has to give us some money, something like that. They give us a minimum amount, about $120 per student. Great question, thank you. So the downside of being a community funded district and just thanks to the school services, this is where this slide came from, is that it's very hard to reject property taxes. And the next few slides show that. And that's why we have to have a larger reserve than was required by the state because of those possible changes in property tax revenue. So this is us, these are our actual. Thank you. This is, I'm going to show this to you in several different ways so you can see how strange and how there's no pattern here. So you'll see in 1516, the orange line is the increase in property taxes that we received from the prior year. And the green line is what the assessed valuation in Beverly Hills was, the increase from the prior year. So you'll see in 1516 and 1617, the assessed valuation for our property tax base went up by 9.11% and 5.28%, but our increase as a district was lower. But then in 1718 and 1819, it reverses. The amount that we received was 10.5% in 1718. The assessed valuation was up 9.10%. And you'll see that same dichotomy play out in 1819. And then in 1920, it reverses again. It goes back to the amount we collected was less than what the assessed valuation was. And then in 2021, it reverses back. So, so in 2122, which is our current fiscal year, we're always very conservative. We set three and a half percent is what we think we're going to get. Three and a half percent is what we think the assessed valuation is going to be. We get assessed valuation number actually in June every year. So, so this past December, they assessed the value of the property in Beverly Hills. They just released the information for the county of LA, which is 6%. And we're not so sure what the average is going to be for 2223, but I'm talking about 2122 right now. So you'll see what we got in 2122 is assessed valuation was 4.11% for Beverly Hills. But what we received from the county was only 2.3%. So that's where we are right now.
Wait, if I may, just really quick, what like accounts for the difference between how much we actually get at the assessed values? It should be directly correlated.
Should be, you would think it would be. There is a, there is an actual formula from the 1970s that drives this calculation. How these property taxes get distributed to the different municipalities and organizations, if you want to call it organization. So there is no rhyme or reason other than that, that calculation. The finance committee actually a few years ago went down to the county to try to figure this out. And I think they came back frustrated because there's no, there's no Excel spreadsheet that you can plug in over it and say that Beverly Hills is going to get X amount of dollars.
Can I ask a question also, Wade, I recall that something you said after this, and I thought, oh gee, I was thinking about. The last. I can't find it right now, but the 2.2% decrease or the less is going to affect, is that going to be part of the budget coming from 2122? Or is this going to affect the city?
So I've got some, I've got some updates for you, so I'll talk with that in a second, so.
Kind of distribution to see that.
Right, right. So, you know, one of the other ways to look at this is to say, what was the average over the last six years? I take the lowest three years of the past six years. The VHSD assessed valuation, 6.1%. What we received was 5.6%. This is another way to look at this as we prepare the budget. We look at averages, we look at the lowest three years, we try to take out the highest and the lowest, just to try to make some sense out of this.
Wade, does it also have to do with this differential, have to do with what's actually collected?
I'm going to give this man a star, if I had a star. So yeah, so here's just another way to look at this over the last few years. And you'll see as of the time this presentation was prepared, we were showing a deficit in the current year of about $650,000 in 2122 to Ms. Marcus's question because of that collection of property taxes. So we went to the county a couple of weeks ago and said, what's going on? This is, this is different than we thought. So as of yesterday, we got word from the county that there was a timing error that the difference is going to come to us sometime in July. They wouldn't tell me the exact amount, but they did admit that there's a timing error, that they were sitting on some of our property tax revenue. So it's not, so it's not going to be a $650,000 deficit.
Wait, I mean, so it will be something less than that, but we're not sure.
We're not sure. And it could be more than what I projected. More, more money, not less money. So I go through this to show, to show the board that it's always important to do what you've done already is to keep an adequate reserve with positive fluctuations, because we just don't know what's going to happen with property taxes as we've been forward. So I'm confident I'm feeling better than I did three or four days ago, that we are not dealing with a $650,000 deficit.
I remember a conversation when I first joined the board about how you were trying to target the 30% of reserves because things like this come up.
Right.
I just appreciate the board and that certain approach.
Most certainly.
Your part about 17, except the general accepted.
Well, the, the actual minimum amount for a district our size is 3%.
Oh, okay, so 30 is 10.
We're aiming for 30, that's what the board has passed.
Yes, that's the board's goal.
If we, if we enter another cycle like we did in 2008, 2009, where there's all of a sudden a steep decline in property values and that, you know, property owners have a right to go try to seek some of their property taxes back, or reassessing their property value. How, how do we, like, how are you thinking about budgeting going forward, given kind of what we're seeing with the chance of there being a recession? We're seeing record high inflation, like, how are you thinking about that?
So when we talk about the multi-year, we'll talk about what we put in as parameters right now, which are around four and a half to four, four to four and a half percent increase every year in property values. The board in the future may want to make that zero.
Yeah.
And not budget any property tax increases. So that's one thing the board can talk about in the future. Any other questions about property taxes? So in this budget for 2223, we've done a lot of building programs and capacity. And I want to go through some of, some highlights of what we've added. So we've been talking a lot about universal transition kindergarten. So to get us fully up to speed, this is the staffing that we've added. Two teachers at Hawthorne, one teacher at Forest Man, some instructional aides at both sites, and you can see the costs right there. That does not include the cost of curriculum, which is fairly substantial. I'm not sure, Dustin, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, so to align all five classrooms, we were able to purchase and adopt a full blown TK play-based curriculum. And we had to purchase branding for all five sections. In addition, we also have to supply three classrooms with TK appropriate, meaning chairs, desks, appropriate curriculum, meaning like play structures and stuff for the classroom. And that is the bulk of what our TK implementation grant has been dedicated towards. And that's where we're at at this time. We've already purchased, we've been able to implement and stuff, so we should all be here by.
Question for you, Dustin. These two classes that we've created, they were not a result of offering. This was a result of the fact that we have opened it up as a result of our decision to get ahead of the game with TK, period.
Correct, that is us.
I just want to make sure that we understand that.
Yep, these, the three classrooms that we had to expand is because we moved our start, our end date from February 2nd to June 30th and accelerated and basically accepted all of our current eligible TK students into the district from.
Okay, and next year, we're planning to have it fully, fully enrolled in the full year, right? We're going to go with a full year next in 2324.
22, 2223 will be a full year, will be full day.
I thought we're going to be 2223. No, we're opening up, it's open, there's still a little window of TK possible students that are not included yet, right?
Nope, so we, we are as far as we can go legally until 2526. In 2526, we can then accept that small little window of those kids that are technically three, that'll turn four.
Okay, so we're only talking about all possible TK for the next three years.
Yep, we have, we have.
And I was wondering if there was going to be another up in the, in the age, so we will not.
Yep, legally, we cannot until when ed code will change in 2526 to allow those three, there'll be three at enrollment, turning four on chart campuses into the TK program. That's outside of if we as a district decide to start furthering the conversation around the early childhood center. That's a totally different conversation and a totally different ed code that we would be following.
So we're full in right now?
We're full in.
Yeah, and not only are we full in, so we just said a meeting with the city as well. And this just goes to show you the positive partnership that we have. Because when we extended that deadline, we were a little concerned that we were kind of encroaching on the city's, their, their early childhood program that they have. And so, but we were, we've been working with them, you know, as far as communication and facility sites. And the good news is that we did not encroach at all on their program. In fact, just goes to show you that there is a high interest in the city for early childhood programs because they have maxed out already, even though we pushed that deadline. So they have their three, they have, I believe it was 16 students already signed up for next year. So the encroaching didn't, didn't make an impact. They're actually able to offer more spots for our youngest students, students that aren't even coming to VHSD yet, which is good.
Yeah, they were shifting to younger kids too, to pick up. They had to train their personnel and get licensing for those ages.
Right.
They have two amazing teachers over.
And that's a great segue to the additional FTE for District five Coordinator of Early Education, Early Childhood Education, which is someone that we need to help us build these programs for.
Do we, can we advertise that position yet, or do we have?
We're interviewing for that position on Thursday, and we were able to pull all the advocates, sorry, I don't need to talk on every app, I'm super excited.
I thought we're doing a study session on the other, I just missed it.
Yeah, we, we, we overwhelming response to the position, a lot of current elementary principals across Southern California. And so our applicants, yes, our applicants are extremely strong and we're really excited. You know, we'll hopefully have a really great candidate coming your way at the next board meeting.
And she will be housed at what school?
She or he.
Or they.
Or they.
They, I'm sorry.
They'll be housed here at the district office. We are working on the second floor for an office for that position. But that position's direct role would be supervising, you know.
Hopefully, they'll listen many more times in the schools.
Yep, 100%.
We also, yeah, thank you, Dustin. We also want to highlight that we know that there's a need at the middle school or counseling, just like we have at the high school. So we're in the process of building out, do they call it the Bulldog Wellness Center? I'm not sure what the. Okay, we hired a counselor for that, or we're going higher counselor, we hired a counselor for that position.
Just offer.
Okay.
Salary?
That's, that's all in, that's the benefits and everything. And we also are working with the site and is working with Dr. Stone to build out an area, a dedicated area for a center. So we're working on looking at moving partitions, some, some sound editing areas, so there's some privacy for the students. And our hope is to get that up and running sometime maybe September, October, to actually have the space available. We're going to have the staff available and then we can get the space available for those kids in that program. And then we're adding some psychologists who I'm also in the district. Oh yeah, and then PTA is donating $20,000 for furniture for the center. Thank you, Senator.
Yes, please. We're also continuing our full-time MFT at all the sites for the upcoming school year as well. So one will be based at BB.
So that's one, but he or she will circulate amongst all the schools or?
No.
Just do it at the middle school?
Yeah.
And not just for special ed, right? It's for.
So actually, I have them working on the gen ed side first, because we have two full-time school sites at BB. So I'm using the MFT to intervene on the general ed side. And then if we need to be advanced, then the school psychologist step in. But we have had some overlap, we had some kids who had some, some concerns that needed to be addressed in by MFT, and they also had an IP, and they were able to access it, and it was very successful.
And to recall, at our previous board meeting, you guys had approved an extension or increase to our Maple Center. So that increase was to reflect additional support for the Bulldog aid, similar to what happens at the Norman aid center. And so that partnership has increased as well, which has been great, and that's at the ed services.
And then we also have the three-day-a-week MFT at the high school. And then we are also hiring the MFT to split time between Forest Man and Hawthorne for next year.
Can you repeat those letters again?
MFT, marriage and family therapists.
And, sorry, how much in terms of like social, emotional learning, whole new classes versus one-on-one counseling? Are you anticipating that these personnel would carry out?
So they are, okay, I'll say my part in it doesn't, they also do some small groups, they're, they're doing everything. It's not, it's, it depends on the needs of the student. So if, if the student is for saying crisis, then that's one-on-one. But they're doing, they're doing brief groups, they're doing LBGTQ groups, they're doing kids who are kind of just like social skills groups. Kids who just don't really know how to interact with their peers, they're doing all of those things along with the group counseling.
Is that a referral? Is that a referral generally from teachers or from parents or both?
It's campus-wide. It can be a teacher, it can be a support staff, it can be a counselor, it can be an administrator, because they have playground aid.
Or the kids themselves.
Or the kids themselves or the parents. Yeah, it's all in.
Wouldn't they also be doing some parent?
So that's tied into the Bulldog aid and the Norman aid, yep, 100%. Yep. And so, so back to Dr. Stewart's question, is the full class in the full school, that's really where they nominate the Bulldog aid, and then each of the elementary school houses already do full classroom each week. So they see each classroom once a week, whether that be utilizing books or stories to be able to create conversation, or they're addressing social issues amongst classmates, you know, and then also leading groups as well.
And I hope, I love how the alleyship and all of those resources have been regularly like featured on Instagram. I don't know who's responsible for that, but I think that the word is out there that there are those services, and I suspect that you're.
Nominate wellness center, shout out to them, have their own Instagram account and do a phenomenal job promoting everything. We try and align with that as much as possible, but all credit to them for that, they did absolutely sensational job, right? And so to the extent that that can continue with the middle school as well, it's really helpful because it not only reaches those teens, but it reaches, you know, a lot of the adults as well.
Yeah, a missed opportunity has always been, and one of the realizations from the reintegration is, you know, having middle school kids have the opportunity for groups too, where they realize that there is somebody that's just like me, and they may be struggling with the same thing. And to bring these kids together, it's kind of has been a missed opportunity in the district that through an organized program and support, just like, we're going to be able to do that. And benefit of course is that kids at middle school, knowing that these supports and services are available, not only coming into sixth grade, but all the way down through high school, without having to kind of find out sometime during your high school. You know that that's there early on.
Yeah, and our intervention with MFT has been very successful. We were almost unable to keep up with the number of crisis threat assessments in the beginning of the year. And what I just said, we've got to address it right away, and I talked to Dr. Brady, and he said, go ahead and pull the trigger. And, and the difference between the beginning of the year to the end of the year is 180% return. We're getting now, we're intervening, and kids are not in crisis to the level where we're having to do threat assessments. They're getting the assistance, they're getting the help and being supported. So it was a good intervention and it showed its value right away.
I'm so happy about this program. I'm really, really proud of you for being, I had a bit to the extent that you guys got this implemented as fast as you did in having already in place with the wall, because I talked about it, you know, there was talk about it, and we were talking about whether it was going to happen, but to actually see this come to fruition, I think is so wonderful. I really thank you for doing it, it just shows how effective you are in making these things happen. And I think it's going to be really good for the families to know about it.
For those in the community that are listening, you have a naming opportunity through BHF.
And of course, one of the, one of the main focuses that we have is student safety and staff safety. So we're actually going to allow district management of the command center. We're excited about that. This first year will be, we try and do a few things, you know, it's almost like a pilot year for us. But we do know we need a director of school safety, which is in the works. We do need another school safety specialist, we're not sure if these titles are going to be the same. And we're going to need some additional support personnel. So the security budget in the big picture is going to go from about $2.3 million of the general fund to around $2.8 million. So there's, there's, there's an increase in cost of security, but it's related to getting this command center off the ground and getting the right personnel in there. So remember that budget includes all of our own campus security, includes the NASDAQ contract, and includes all these personnel that are going to run the command center.
Do you use all of the budget from this year?
We'll know that in about three or four weeks, about where it comes in. We've used most of it.
In the budget that you had this year, did you have the position for the Director of Security budget?
We did, and we used some of those dollars because of the additional overtime related to some security issues. So, but I'll give that breakdown to the board in another section.
Because I know we added, we upped the security this year, and we didn't fill the Director of Security position. What's the total increase?
We're going from about, in round numbers, around, from this year around $2.3 million to around $2.8 million for that year.
So that's $500,000. And last year we increased $300,000?
I'd have to go back and see, we've always been around $2 million, give or take 1.2 to 2.1.9 to 2.2. It's always been that range for the last couple, three years.
Can you explain the difference between the Director of School Safety, which is the one I believe you could interview, and the School Safety Specialist? How are you?
So I think the director is going to be, you know, out front, developing the plan for school safety, meeting with community leaders, meeting with site principals, making sure site plans are up to speed. That's going to be the face of the security program for the district. The School Safety Specialist, or whatever that title is going to be, is going to be the person that's really in the command center, making sure, you know, everything is working properly. You know, looking at cameras, looking at systems. In a nutshell, that's kind of what that's going to be.
So that person's going to be, okay, I understand, I just wanted to know because it wasn't clear. Is that amount of money that you're giving that specialist, you say, is that going to be able to cover the watching the command center on the 24, whatever you decide to do, or is that going to be somebody else, going to be people underneath?
So there's going to be people underneath that person, we can't work someone 24 hours a day, unfortunately.
But is he going to be responsible for that too? I mean, is that?
Yeah, so that's.
I mean, overlapping some jobs and.
There will be, there's, there's a little bit of a learning curve for us as we get this command center off the ground. But there'll be someone in the morning, there'll be some overlap, someone's going to be there in the evening. So there's going to be, they're probably, I'm not going to say there's not going to be anyone there at 2:00 AM, because I won't be wanting to think there is, but we're going to have to figure that out.
I just wondered if, when you said that, that we're going to have an overlap, or we're going to need that overlap. I mean, I understand some of it, but.
It's not a very big overlap.
I mean, I'm thinking in terms of the fact that we're spending 500, and I'm, and safety, don't misunderstand me, safety is not most of my mind for the kids. I'm just also thinking about the $500,000.
Right. That's, that's a great question. If you've listened to the news over the last couple of days, you've seen something where there's a bipartisan bill in Washington addressing school safety and gun reform, school safety. Some of the language in that actually has money coming to school districts across the country for things like this. So keep your ears open, we may be able to get some federal revenue to cover some of these costs in the near future.
I just got it emailed today of our grant fund.
I'm assuming that this is, the budgeting is more for, it's more for manpower. So it be at manpower in the command center, or how you're going to utilize NASDAQ for, how many people you need at each school site for the different events, and really giving you flexibility about how you're going to sort out where you need your manpower, where you have your key pieces in place with your Director of Security, your.
Like a manager.
That command center person. And then the rest of that is really giving you flexibility for how you're staffing those other areas via NASDAQ, armed guards, CSEA, or.
I'll be talking about. Yeah, I'll be talking about that.
So we're happy to announce we have some additional team members coming on board. As the board knows, Horace Van has been staffed differently than Hawthorne for the last few years. So in the proposed budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're adding an assistant principal at Hawthorne. Of course, those, those folks will most likely matriculate over to Elrodeo, but I, you didn't hear that from me. And then also we're doing some support for the maintenance and operations department. We had a position overseeing custodial services in the evening and afternoons up until a few years ago. That position has been vacant for a couple of years. So to, to maximize our, our staff and make sure our, our facilities are clean and, and serviced. We've added a coordinator of custodial services for next year.
Is this position, the coordinator of custodial services include helping out there?
It's all.
I'm just comparing the salary to a security safety specialist.
Yes, so, so all of those numbers are, are, are a little bit in fluctuation.
Question, yes, Michael asked, have we hired yet the assistant principal?
No, we're in the process, so we're.
So I'm looking at the overall budget and all of these additions, and this is a tremendous amount of additions for our, our district. And I know we also have a early education. I'm wondering if we can divide those duties, hire this person for Hawthorne and divide those duties to both of the second APs on sites. So that way you have that position at both sites, because you said that you want them on the sites. You want this early education person on the sites. And I, I, you know, it, it's just, for me, we're hiring a lot of people.
Oh no.
Usually on top. What, lot, lot of people at the top and this might be a way to still bringing a new person on to help out, take some load off. But with, with so far, you know. I think it would work, I think it may work.
I have, I imagine, I have just, because I, I've been here five years, I haven't had any support within education services. I had a coordinator in my first year, we, we, HR. That person was, was back into the classroom and that position had ever been filled over the last three years. And so really when we started to adapt and bring on this early childhood. I'm not seeing it as an assistant zoo that I would not be able to try and tackle. We are in the process of ordering furniture, selecting curriculum. But it is a totally different piece, having, having five additional sections of four-year-olds. And knowing, as much as I tried reading about four-year-olds, you know, like. Having a specialist to be able to support both sites administration, but then also the teachers that are going to be brand new into that arena. That's really what that position from a district lens is going to be able to support us and then be able to help us if we're going to create. An early childhood center possibly if we move over to Elrodeo in that transition. That's really what that.
So let me ask you this then, Justin, I'm going to take that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, is there a way to take the existing AP, the second AP and Horace Man and split them, both schools? Because you're going from, why do we have to go from none to one whole position? Yeah, so I, we, I think we, we got comfortable, everybody, and I've watched this happen in the past. And then we start really bumping up staff, but we're not bumping up students, right? And we're going to get tied to this and then somewhere down the line, we're going to have to cut. So I'm trying to manage this so we don't all get it at once, right? So we, we're not, this is not, this is not trickling in, this is a lot, this is the most I've ever seen come in one year as far as staffing. As far as, you know, non-administration stuff. So I'm, I'm, what I'm asking is can we reexamine this and how we allot the duties for our administration? Not taking away your coordinator, keep your coordinator, okay? And just see if we can manage with one less person.
I, I would, I'd like to see it more in a global way. I mean, we really want to focus on improving the education and we're adding TK classes, we want to build our early education. We really want to focus on that and we really want to focus on what, how our, you know, how we are delivering that education. So if we're adding these, these positions, it's really like, what are those descriptions and how is that going to get us to. That end goal of improving education. So what are those things that, you know, I don't want to just cut positions and then say, well, why aren't we improving on our. And our results and how we deliver education when we're cutting the very thing that would help us get there. So I would rather see in a more global picture of how that support is going to help us get to those improvements that we're all. All have all agreed that that's what we want to see. So, you know, I, what I'm carrying is that's how, that's the support you need to be able to get there. You're having to focus on those areas so that that can really help develop those teachers and really help to develop those programs. So how do we put, what, where is the rest of that in terms of the measurement and having you all that accountable so that we really get to see that? And then, and all, in all of those other positions so that then you can feel comfortable that. These are where we want to put our dollars because this is where we prioritize where, what we want to see. And are there other areas where there's dollars that are not necessarily where we're prioritizing? And maybe that, that is someplace else.
Yeah, can I say, so we, we did discuss, you know, we were very cautious when we started to look at these positions before we brought them to board. And, you know, having, having the halftime assistant principal at two different sites is, is not a position that anybody wants. People need those positions.
I've never heard of that, sorry.
It, it is.
Not feasible.
You know, to not have a place, you're three days at one place, two in another, it's, you know, it's, it's not a position that anybody wants to, to keep. So we lose those people. But more importantly, we were looking at, at the need. And so when we look at our instructional leaders of our principals and, and the need at both schools. You know, we're, we're, we're having our instructional leader. Who is just to keep up with the need for parent meetings and, and conference, like they're not getting into the classroom. They're not getting into team meetings for grade levels. And so that's the, you know, to increase, student achievement, to increase the instructional leadership. We have to remove some of those administrative responsibilities that are tying down our assistant principals. So it, and then Hawthorne, you know, you, we want our, our principal to be able to be attending these meetings. And instead, it's just fire after fire that they're putting out. So they're not, they're struggling getting into classrooms to observe instruction and to, to meet with grade level teams to. To understand more about the curriculum and what's happening at each grade level. And even more importantly, to really look and examine that data for growth. And, and they're not able to get to those meetings because there's such a need for, you know, being accessible. You know, to the community and to, to parents.
I understand that, Michael, and I, well, I'll jump on what, what Mary said and say. I hope that if we move forward with this, these teams, that there's going to be measurable outcomes. In all of these departments, right, whether it's academic, whether it's custodial, whether it's. That, that in the year, I, I kind of want to see, okay, marketed improvement because we're investing a lot, right? Is that, Mary, that is what you're aligning?
Yeah, because I think we've all identified this is really important to us and I think it's, it's worthwhile to invest there. And we just want to make certain that, we're not just putting a teacher there, but we're actually having a plan and I hear that that's what you're doing. So we just want to make sure that we're, we're identifying that in really clear, measurable ways. So that we, and we keep track of that, so we have that kind of mid-year point where we kind of check in and say, are we using these resources? These really valuable resources, because the human resources are the most expensive and the most valuable. And are we using them in the best way so that we can get those results? I, I absolutely think it's, it's what we, where we want to put our resources. And we hear this with the, the, we talked about Hawthorne and we talked about wanting to make certain that we really can improve on, on that. And so I think it's worthwhile that we sort of make sure that we're, you know, we don't want to throw money at things. We want to make sure that the resources are clearly.
And at the, the, the district by coordinator, the district by coordinator of early education. If that's really there to support the, the transitional kindergarten, I don't know what the goal is of that. But there's very little metrics from transitional kindergarten, it's not like they tested, right?
Yeah.
So that's. But I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying that the, the effects from that won't be seen for a couple of years. You know, the real effects of hav- having a successful transitional kindergarten program, right? We're not really in the development until it starts moving out.
But if you, but if you want to be building that program, then they're going to be building that program from a looking long-term and into the future.
Yeah, that's, and that's what I'm hoping is that, that.
That's true, today.
That maybe not year one, but year two or three, we're going to be thankfully have that position because we're going to see this growth, right?
Well. Two years, we need to start now if we want to build an education, early education program that's going to be.
We're looking at building the childhood program by putting in all the possible help that we can give to the K two. The only thing that I'm a little bit, and I'm sort of zeroing in on a little bit of what Noah is saying. Is that the director of the early childhood or the K two that's coming in is going to be working very close. With the administration and with, and with the kids at that age. We're adding so much at this time, is that's the only thing I'm concerned about, is there we're getting with the addition of another AP. We're getting into a very heavy amount of, really loading up on the upper end. In comparison to the early childhood K two and the, and the coordinator for that. That's the only thing I'm, I like to see everything that's going to support that completely.
So I think your APs are going to support that as well, I believe, right?
Well, yeah, there's one piece I want us to bring out, I want to piggyback on what, where Dr. Brady was and addressed what Mrs. Marcus and, and what Mr. Mark was saying. Remember when we came out of reconfiguration? Hawthorne's numbers enrollment was much less than Horace Man. So we staffed Horace Man accordingly with the three administrators. That is no longer the case. Horace Man and Hawthorne's enrollment are the same.
And they also had the early childhood, I mean, they had the specialist more so at Horace Man.
They have one more class, how, however, twenty-two, twenty-three is going to be the same.
No, I understand that, that's what I'm saying, at that time.
At that time, you're right, Mrs. Marcus, exactly. So, so we staffed it heavier with administrative, administrative support because of those factors. Those factors are no longer relevant, now we're comparing apples to apples. There, I'm looking at the current enrollment numbers as of today, there are four students difference between the two sites. So.
But did Horace Man drop or did Hawthorne go away?
Hawthorne increased, so.
Over a hundred?
Yeah, five fifty-eight to five sixty-two.
We had all kinds of times.
Well, they have the city programs.
Right, and those are not in those numbers. And so, yeah. No, so Horace Man, Horace Man always have like six of some change.
Six and change.
Six of some change, I'm, I'm remembering like six sixteen-one.
It did drop, it did kind of go like this.
So we had transfers and then we have, we have people move in, we have people move out. And then remember, we've been balancing them over the last two years too, so that we can have equitable programs. So I, I want the board to keep that in mind when we're, when you're making a decision on this. Because now you're, you're looking at same, same, not different, same.
And I think that's important.
But do you, did you have a cutoff in mind that since we didn't staff Hawthorne with the two APs? Was there a number in your head that at some point you don't need two APs?
You know, if this were anywhere else, I would say yes, but the level of support and that, that is needed to run our campuses, we need this. I mean, spend a day on the campus if you, if you have any doubts. I mean, our administrators are, are going from Bell to Bell and, and, and there, I mean, no one's sitting around, I mean. No, no, I'm just saying, it's, it's a need, it's a need, it really is. I mean, there, we have the quality of our programs, the level of, of interaction with our families and our community. And just what's happening as a whole, it's needed and, and people are stretched really thin.
Hawthorne, I, I mean, I just want to just echo my support for what Dr. Brady and what Laura is sharing here. Like I, I really believe that even though like I'm all for lean organizations, I really am. I think the needs of this community from an engagement standpoint are really high.
Yes.
And I think we've seen example after example after example. Where administration, not because they're just kind of sitting back and chilling, I think they haven't met the community's expectations. For that level of engagement at the time.
You should believe me, that's a hundred percent. Before I came here, I managed five districts. I'm busier here than I was managing five districts.
Yeah, I believe that.
So, and it's just the level of engagement, and there's nothing wrong with it.
Well, we also have a really, we have a really robust program.
Exactly.
We offer a lot, we may be small, but we offer.
That's what I'm saying, but you have to have the manpower to do that.
So, so there's a lot of programs, right? So I, I'm.
It requires a lot of administration.
I was just going to say to, to answer that. Because of, of the miles that I've driven on here. I find that it's from the trustee point of view that I, I really, when they come with new staffing suggestions. I've always held fire to that because it's, I want them to fight for these positions. I want, I want to, I want to feel really comfortable and I want the public to feel really comfortable with the decision that the board makes. Because hiring administrators is, we can see the positive effect it has on students, but a lot of people don't. So we really have to make sure that what we're doing is going to trickle down and support our students in the end. Even, even your coordinator of, of custodial services, that that's going to affect students. That's what I, that's what, that's what this all has to come back to, right? So we're, we're semi-experts, we're, we're whatever we are, you know, we're showing up in the classroom. So we kind of, we, we take these conversations with a grain of salt because. Teachers, for the most part, do their job in their classroom, right? And we throw all these administrators on top of that. But it really comes down to the classroom, that's what it all comes down to. So if teachers in the end are feeling the positive effect of this kind of increase in support, great. But if they don't, well, it's going to come back to us.
And you also have to think about the community too, that your stakeholders, your voters, your community. And really making sure that we can represent and be the public relations, the communications for them of the importance of this. Because we have to make sure that they understand it also.
Mrs. Marcus, may I add to that? Because I think that's such a brilliant point from the communications perspective, full of public relations. And making sure the community understands, there are three major points here that I've seen in my time at the H U S D. I came in mid-reconfiguration. And Dr. Brady and the cabinet had planned post-reconfiguration to evaluate their projections that were pre-reconfiguration. So they did their best to say, this is what we think we're going to need in terms of staffing, but you have to live it. And so we had that planned and the pandemic hit. And then we were all in the pandemic, what do we need for that? What teachers do we need for home learning? How does that look? All about staffing, that's entire, every single, I would say, resource that we had in this district went to managing a pandemic. We haven't had an opportunity to reassess where we're at for staffing and what we need to run a successful district. Post-reconfiguration until now, that's one element. I think that the other really important element, this is the first time since I've been here that we're bringing both construction. And security directly reporting to the superintendent and that changes staffing needs. And from a crisis communications perspective, seeing shootings in Texas. And being able to know that I can communicate directly with the team and that there's a substantial team of people. There's a director of school safety who's going to be able to speak to our parents clearly consistently to be in schools. There's going to be someone in the command center who is checking those radios, who is checking those cameras, who is evaluating what needs to happen there. And, and to make sure that there's adequate support there, I think that's invaluable for our community to understand that that is then separate. From a new initiative from the state to introduce universal TK. And although it is a five-year introduction rollout, we have a fantastic board of education who has said, this is an opportunity for us. To really look at the idea that we can fast-track it a little bit. And I think that understanding that, yes, we're fast-tracking it, it's going to be coming anyway. It will be coming in five years. What have we done? We've fast-tracked it a little bit and that's had an impact on staffing. We then look at, okay, this is the state's vision, city has a vision, there's an opportunity with preschool. Someone needs to help support that transition. So I think that for the community to really understand those three elements, thank you, Mrs. Marcus for that dovetail, I'm sorry to hijack that. But those three elements, I think are critical for everyone to understand, they're separate, but they are linked. And so it feels heavy and like a lot of staff right now, it's all heading at once, but they are three separate elements.
No, I agree and I think it's a, you know, it's a reorganization in many ways and, and all of those ways. But I think this is the perfect time for it. And I think it's, and I'm excited about it actually. And I think it has, there's short-term vision and there's long-term vision and both of those elements are here. And I like that a lot and I'm, I'm really excited about it.
I, I wish you could see, Austin, and, and, sorry, let me just say really quick and then hand it off to Dustin. But I, you know, we appreciate, you know, the conversation and because it, it, it is important that, you know, we're, we're seeing the same things. The metric piece is.
and because it, it, it is important that, you know, we're, we're seeing the same things, the metric piece is, weighs very heavy on us and we understand that. I, I wish you could see in this very room, we meet every Monday as a cabinet, because you'd be surprised at how we beat each other up over things like this. Because we, because we, because we are very cautious and see that what we spend, and we try to spend less than what we've been allocated to spend. We make that a priority and, you know, we push each other a little bit about what can you cover in your department or what can you, like, I, and I just wish that you could see that before asking anything, that we really do examine the need because it's not easy for us to come up and ask for things as well. I mean, unless we really truly need them and we do beat these things up and have, have the same conversations brought up tonight as we've had in cabinet before we request the positions.
Dustin, you can.
Yeah, in, I could, I could, hey Rebecca, but I just, post-reconfiguration, we focused on this middle school and I just want everyone to think in this room that we're gonna be stretched at the two extremes. You know, we have the initiative from the state around the college career readiness indicators that are, come out and then been published and obviously the pandemic hit. So there's a lot of focus that's going in, not only just could we wanna be too open up at the high school, but just around, we're gonna be measured differently than we had in the past around those college and career readiness indicators that we've done presentations and brought to the board. And then on the opposite direction, totally polar, you know, the opposite end was then the same initiative came down the road as early childhood education. But it's not just about launching the TK program, it's also around our gate program, it's also around our EL program. We see more foundational EL students come in and that's part of that responsibility. So there are tangibles coming out of that coordinator as early as at the end of next school year. It's around, how are EL students doing? What changes were you able to bring to the already robust gate program that we offer, but what other extensions? Could we identify more students earlier for that program? Those types of things are also part of that responsibility, not just, and it's not, it's not a not just TK because that's a lot, but it's in addition to, those are, those things. So, so then we can also still have a team focus on what's happening in ninth through twelfth grade to make sure that we are, you know, climbing the ranks of the US News National Report, but then also making sure that our youngest learners are still being taken care of at the same time. Because we've, we've tackled that middle school section.
Right.
So now we're, we're stretched over here, you know, and that's part of that.
I mean, I, go ahead.
So, so along those lines then, Dustin, at the end of this, at the end of the day or at the end of the year, it, it needs to trickle back into more effective teaching, right? Whatever happens, it just, I'm, I'm just concerned and I'll keep saying it, keep, keep this up, that it comes back to the classroom and, and everything. I have, I have no reservations about our security. I cannot not invest in security. You cannot get this construction program, you know, continue to, to finish it, whatever. But education is paramount for me. And if this is a way that we all believe that we're going to do it better, great, great.
But, but, but like even on that, what's the metric that you're, that they follow? Like for me, the metric for TK is I wanna see a hundred percent of those kids matriculated to, you know, through, through school, right?
Yeah, TK has different metrics, but I'm gonna say you're adding another assistant principal.
Yeah.
So then you're gonna say that because you're adding that kind of support and get administrators that need to be back in the classroom to improve instruction, that that's gonna be, that's the end result.
In the, in the flip side of that, the flip side of that is also, I need, I need those administrators at the sites that I can train and have on the ground level for, to help reduce litigation.
Right.
Our Title IX, our, our special education litigation. But when there's, when they're stretched too thin, I can't, I can't go below the surface. We're putting out the fighters.
I understand.
I, I think it's all interconnected, so like if you look at the strategic plan, all the things we prioritize, we've laid out that map and put metrics there. One can't happen without the other because there, what, at the, one is at the expense of the other, so that we prioritize and we wanna see those, you wanna see everything improve. And I think so by having that support there, you wanna see greater parent satisfaction, you wanna see, I mean, on all the different levels. And I think we would see that if we all stay focused on that and we are looking at those metrics, because that's what we, that's the work that's been done. And if you need to look at, go back and look at that and refine that based on how we performed this year and it's make that a little more, more clear and adding in that the TK and the early education, adding in the parameters that are, that are changing from the state so that we're just even more refined about what we're looking at, I think that will help us get to where we wanna be and then identify. And I think we are all very aware that the community is going to hold us accountable and I think that's to your point, Noah, and to Mrs. Marcus. You have experiences that, I hear this a lot, oh, the district is top-heavy, so, and you know that, so you already know you're gonna hear that scrutiny. So you know you're gonna have to answer to that with performance and, uh, because people are gonna look for that. They're gonna look at comparing us to other schools with our spending for administration versus student spending, you know, breaking that down and are we top-heavy and where are our dollars going? Is it correlating to performance? And so we wanna be able to answer those questions and have them be positive answers. And we all know that we're gonna be helped that from a community standpoint. And some of those things may not be fair ways of evaluating that, but we know that they're going to be used. So we should look at that all the time and see how are we faring? It's the same thing as saying, how do we compare to US News and World Report? Is that a fair assessment? You can say, no, it isn't, but they're going to do it anyway, so let's see where we are and let's see, and then let's understand where we've been in and why.
And the other thing is we're doing something a little bit different, um, which we're looking forward to, because we've been having this, because it shouldn't be a once-a-year, uh, discussion with the board, but here we have a planning session that's coming up, which I fully believe that this will be part of our conversation. And it, it's timed nicely that we have a, a planning session with the board and then we have our leadership retreat. So, and then we start the new school year. So there's kind of a systematic way moving forward because this should be part of our conversation and not only at a time where we're requesting an increase in staffing. So I, I want, we have to finish, I just wanted to say this last thing. When we, when we see opportunities for improvement, we either change the way we do things, or we spend money, or we spend money to change the way we do things, right? So we, we just wanna be aware as, as what is the most effective way to really move forward in, in any time, if you will. And I just, I, you know, I wish you all the best and hire the right people because we really need to, you know, make the work.
I wasn't mad that you were gonna say something.
No, I, I, it was sort of said, what I was gonna say at this point.
Thank you, colleagues. A great discussion. So to wrap this up, as we talked about building capacity, we're looking at, uh, uh, building our own facilities team, if you will, through an executive director of construction services and possibly a fiscal analyst that would be a district employee. Right now, we outsource that work to a third party, it costs about a hundred thirty thousand dollars. Through that third party, you get reports about construction, construction reports for the CBOC. Uh, but it's possible for the same amount of money, if we hire the right person, to get someone to do those reports for us and we can get them, uh, uh, more rapidly and whenever we need them. And that would be the point of possibly having our own fiscal analysts. Keep us moving forward. Just a general cost of doing business, these numbers will, should be eye-opening for the board, especially the first two, hers and serves. That's our retirement for hers for class one folks, serves for certificate folks. I can see the cost for this year and the cost for next year and the dollar increase. So the dollar increase just for the retirement accounts for our staff is more than the cost of all these new positions we just talked about. Just the cost of retirement. You see the three million and then seven million dollars for the board of the community to know that is eleven percent of our general fund budget goes to the pension cost for our employees. That's amazing and that's unfunded. We get no extra dollars from the state to do this. So that's important for the community to understand. Uh, workers' comp for next year, we're actually going to.
What's the, sorry, what's the mean? And what, what, what's the cause of the delta there? What are the main causes?
Of the, of the increase?
Yeah.
Those service and firsts are, are, are under, unfunded, underfunded at the state level. So those programs are trying to catch up, if you will, over the next few years.
We're not done.
I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a.
It's a statewide.
It's a statewide.
They don't have control.
Yeah.
We have no control of that.
We're possible.
Correct, we have no control of that. Uh, next year, we're gonna have orders compensation costs. Remember, for the last couple of years, we didn't because we get bank some money in prior years, so we've used most of that bank. So we're having a little bit of a cost next year. Liability and property insurance is going from the premium, this is the premium we pay, from seven sixty-three to eight hundred and ninety thousand. That, of that hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar increase, about a hundred and five thousand of that is related to liability. So the property increase is fairly small, or the insurance, but it's all related to liability and, and the litigious environment that we live in.
So those are projected, like they, they're figuring this eight ninety, that is, in other words, they have projected there will be an increase in liability from the current year and so that's why it's increased.
It's, it's based on our, uh, what's happened to us in the past year.
Uh, so they make sort of an algorithm and they say, okay, you're, you're gonna need to spend more on coverage for liability.
Correct, it's based on what's happened to us as a district. So we're in a pool of all school districts.
Got it.
So they compare us all and, and some of us are, you know, below the mean, some of us are above the mean. So, and then we get a rate and we just got a rate.
So that's, that's good to know because that means every time there is sort of a lawsuit or some sort of litigation, it, it affects our future premiums and our.
Most certain.
Right, and that's true with any type of insurance, right?
Correct, right, good, good points. Of course, uh, keeping the doors open, we have to have electricity, natural gas and water, sewer. Uh, those costs have gone up a little bit for next year. Good news, legal representation. We estimate this cost in this current year of two million dollars, we're able to reduce that next year to one point three million.
I don't see how that's possible.
I thought, how's that?
That's dream, uh, dream, dream, dream.
Yeah, no, no, we believe in that based on what, that we, we have some cases that are coming to a close in the near future. And, and if we don't have new cases, we believe that those amounts won't go down.
The way we have to, the way from the future basis is to make sure that we identify kids early enough so that we don't run into that problem.
And there's a lot more of an increase of those kids who are potential liabilities circling the drain, so far, I mean, I see, you know, every day, it's unbelievable. Even around the kids who were up until age ten, like, fine, apple pie, everything's great and all of a sudden it just being, like, they tell me, it says back here.
Yeah, I see it every day.
It's like, what?
So what you have here is just a summary of the general fund, you have the estimated actions for the current year. Uh, you have the draft budget for next year. Just to know for the board of the community, this is the first time our expenditure budget for the general fund has gone above ninety million dollars. Uh, and you see the change looking at the two years. So when we do our multi-year planning that we have to submit to LICO, these are some of the assumptions, uh, or the word that was asked about what do we say going forward. Remember, we have OPEP contributions for future medical. We continue to, to budget two percent of payroll for that. In the future, we're going to have some certificate staffing reductions, we believe, uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five based on declines in enrollment of three FTE in each of those years. We, someone asked about secured property tax revenues. We've budgeted for twenty-three, twenty-four, this is a year past the budget. Uh, a four and a half percent increase and a four percent increase in the next year, twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, we have a salary increase built in, uh, in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four, in those years of two and a half percent. That's been negotiated already. And then we put some money in the budget for the opening of Elrodale Elementary School. This is miscellaneous cost of two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Wait, um, since we're, we set the property tax revenue, uh, the, the value of properties is going down slightly, right? I mean, in terms of like looking at projected, um, assessment value, why is it that the tax revenue would increase in twenty-three, twenty-four?
Actually, they, they do, the, the fiscal folks we work at don't really believe there's gonna be a decrease of property values here in Beverly Hills. They still see an increase and they actually see an increase much higher than what we projected. So, uh, but if the, if, if the economy changes and something happens, we'll need to come back to the board. The next opportunity would be at First Entra in December and, and make adjustments to these multi-year projections.
So I thought I saw on one of your slides, uh, that it's saying that because of the pandemic, that we're not allowed reassessments and increasing devalue. And so we've caught up, is that what you're saying?
So, yeah, so this is the year where we, it's hitting us and we're, we were hoping for a rebound next year. So, but it's something we have to look at. You know, when we get our taxes for twenty-two, twenty-three, we budgeted, you know, four percent or so, five percent. It, it may come in at ten percent. So we may get a, a, a huge amount because of that pent-up demand. We, we haven't seen the tax revenue from all these current, you know, the, the big explosion of sales over the last year. We haven't seen that round. So we may have a huge spike and then we'll have to look and see if we need to decrease some of these future numbers. So. So don't get upset with this slide. This is where our multi-year projections are right now. These do not, these numbers do not include any additional state funds and I'll talk about that in a second. There's gonna be some additional state funds for, for us, uh, not LCFF funds, but other funds. So when you look at this slide right now, you'll see, uh, the revenues expenditures for the general fund and operational gain or loss, which is showing a loss here of three point one million for next year, two point three for the following year and six hundred twenty thousand for twenty-four, twenty-five. And you see your reserves going to twenty, or twenty-eight percent to about twenty-six percent. That is anticipating no additional funds from the state of California and that's not gonna happen. But since the state budget is not passed, uh, the Los Angeles County Office of Education, when we adopt the budget in the week or two, unless we have a pass state budget, they're not going to let me put any of those revenues into the budget.
These figures include all of the new positions?
Yes, includes all the new positions and everything we've been talking about. So, yeah, so the state's has a lot of money, billions and millions of dollars more than even in the January, like the governor's budget. We have money coming, come in for expanded learning opportunities, Dustin's favorite program. Uh, we're not sure exactly how much, but it could be anywhere from six hundred thousand to a million and a half dollars. We're not sure. The one in the middle is highlighted because we are, we know for sure we're gonna get these dollars. This, the governor said, we're gonna give the, the split districts a billion, the legislature said eight and a half billion. So we know we're gonna get these funds. For us, it could be around four and a half million dollars next year.
One time, one time.
One time, one time.
Is it tied to any specific?
Uh, the, the, the legislature wants to tie it into staffing, helping you with staffing, the governor said you can use it for whatever needs you have. So, so we're not sure exactly how that's gonna play out.
And this is, and that number's not in your budget?
That number's not in the budget.
And this is not like, it, it makes no difference whether we're a TDA school or a community-funded school, this is for everybody.
They used to call it categorical funding and it comes separate and apart from the, the AK funding.
So if we got this funding, we would, we would not lose money next year if we get this.
Exactly, so here we go. So just looking at the four and a half billion dollars, just taking that into account, just that. Uh, we have no loss in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, we have a, a, a minimal impact in twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five. But remember also, this includes the fact that I reduced the property taxes because of the issue with property taxes. So if we get a little bit more property taxes, both of those numbers could very well be positive by the middle of July.
So, so, so for next year, you assumed four and a half percent of increase.
Uh, I mean, property taxes for next year is around five percent, I think, five point two five, I think. So this is, let's go back. That's a great question because everyone needs to be on the same page.
You have five two five, I think.
See down below in the bottom corner, for next year, we've got five point two five percent secure.
Sorry, I'm confused. So what did you just have on?
Oh, that's for the year after that. Oh, that's for the year after that, for the fall.
Oh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thanks. No, no, you're, that, that's a great question. A lot of numbers.
We're gonna adjust, but there are also a lot of grants where when the state five years ago tried to utilize the LCAP to consolidate all these external fund streams. It's gone down the drain over the last three years. So now you've seen, like, we've submitted twenty-three different plans this year. We're going on to twenty-four and twenty-five. So there's things like A through D completion grant that will be coming through. There's a lot of other grant opportunities, again, focusing on the, the nine through twelve grade, and then now focusing on the early elementary. So there's an implementation grant that we've already received for TK, but there's two other grants that we're applying for, for professional development to support those TK and early elementary teachers. So there's a lot of grants that are out there that are still, we're, we're plugging away at trying to complete and finish before you get the whole of that money to put it somewhere. There's a lot out there.
So yeah, so let me just go back to this slide for a second because it's really important to, to show the board that, you know, after all is said and done, we do believe that you're going to maintain your thirty percent reserve in next year and the two out years. Based on what we know right now. So that's, that's important for the board.
What do we gonna get?
Thirty percent reserve. We're gonna be able to keep our thirty percent reserve as far as.
Didn't look good on the other slide.
I know. That's why I had to get to this slide.
Thank you.
You may be able to add this in July.
Yeah, so, so we will probably do something called a forty-five day revise. Haven't really done that much in the past. But what we'll do is bring to the board, the last meeting in July, an update of the budget based on what the actual state budget looks like. And I'll be able to give that to the board in July.
Thank you.
And one quick question. Our new chief business executive has come in as well, Dr. Megan and all of us right now.
Yes, yes. No, he'll be fully up to speed and, and, and he and I may present together in July as I transition out and he transitions in. So we'll have him, we'll have him up to speed. There are some other factors, though, that the board needs to keep in your back pocket. And we have legal settlements that are still pending both for and against the district that, that we'll have to, to, to address.
I was thinking like, what for? Which one is the four one?
We have a four one.
We do have a four one.
We have inflation. We'll have to keep, keep aggressive inflation as that impacts. It's impacting curriculum. It's impacting the ability to get paper. It's impacting technology. So there's some real impacts inflation starting to have.
Have you, have you, have you made an assumption for that for next year in the budget? Like, have you just assumed across the board?
A cola increase, but it may not be enough. It may not be enough. So there's gonna be some additional costs as we implement district preschool program and, and actually develop that department.
Wait, I'm sorry to interrupt. What is the cola increase?
I'd have to look and see. I think it's somewhere around five percent. No, it's, but it may not be enough. And we may need to increase that. What we do find when we look, when I give you the unodded actuals or Mr. Bootsman does in September, you'll find that the budget, we give a school site a hundred dollars and they only spend eight. That's kind of the trend here. So there's always, we always try to keep adjusting that. So. Six point two five percent. Thank you. There may be some costs upfront costs that would have to come out of the general fund and we do some development of this property. And then, you know, that feasibility study continues to move forward. We hope to recoup any of that in a later transaction, though.
You might want to look at the.
Yeah. If, if there was a resurgence in COVID and we had to go back to mandate the lockdowns for remote learning, we'd have to address that if we didn't get the funds.
We don't anticipate.
If there's a change in the JPA, we, we would discuss that because the JPA is only good for twenty-three at this point. And this one in the middle, that last bullet, is really important because this could really impact Beverly Hills. There is legislation out there that would mandate transportation for all TK six students that we provide their transportation. We would get no funding from that because that would go through the LCFF. So if that comes to fruition in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that would be an unfunded program that we would have to address. I know it sounds like a long ways off, but it really isn't.
It's a complex.
And we're gonna fight them.
I'm gonna think of your, these, 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 these.
And, and.
Well, that happens.
Right. As related to construction, we're going to be updating the measuring and the H press when we work with our new bond management consultant and validate those costs. So that's ongoing. And as I said earlier, when things, when we get the state budget, we'll bring these numbers back to the board. And we expect to see that thirty percent reserve across all the multi-years. Any questions from the board?
I just want to thank you for the very thorough presentation. The amount of thought that went into this by the administration is evident. So.
It's also readily understandable, I think, for the most part.
Question that I have is that in the, in the, we are not presenting anything tonight in the meeting with this, or is this just now for us?
So tonight, we have a public hearing where we hear from any of the public that want to talk about the budget. We've had no comments to date, but if someone wanted to come and speak.
They're not being presented this.
No, ma'am. No, Ms. Marcus. No, they're not gonna be presented this. We'll do the actual budget presentation when we adopt it on the twenty-eighth.
And that, they'll see something like this then at that time.
Yes, Ms. Marcus. They will.
Fair enough.
Do you mind if I share something too? Just because you'll see the LCAP and you'll see that the LCAP budget does not reflect nearly what Sirroch just presented. And that's because with the LCAP, because we are basically, we only have to really address our unduplicated students within those funding sources. And that's what you'll see is what's really reflected. And so you're talking like our five hundred thousand dollars for categorical, which is their title one funds. So it's such a small piece of that puzzle versus our strategic plan is way more robust and addresses our full district. And the full funds that Sirroch just presented versus what's actually addressed in the LCAP. So if you see anything like why is it in the LCAP, it's really because it's in our strategic plan in the LCAP. We just had to address. It's like air tutors, which is for our EL students primarily.
Very, very interesting area. I have to very well understand.
I'm just gonna go around. Eli, do you have anything to add?
Just thank you very much. Definitely agree. The fact that it's very easy to understand and I appreciate the amount of conversation around each of the different topics around.
I really like it. I also like the slide about the variables and different things to consider, you know, different assumptions because those, those can be, those can really change things rapidly and sporadically. You know, COVID resurgence, of course. Also, the, you know, factoring in the early learning education program is huge. It's a lot of different moving parts. And I just think that those can be, you know, a lot of subjects.
Thank you, Wade and staff. I, the one thing we didn't put in here or even discuss is possible impacts of moving along with the CFP for our instruction program. If we decide to go in that direction, that's not my item at all. That's gonna be a major expense. And I think that we need to, if we go in that direction, we need to start budgeting more conservatively to be able to access those funds on a annual basis. Maybe if we drop our reserve for that time, you know, we drop our reserve to twenty-five percent or something at that time, so we can find.
Well, thank you for this. I am really appreciative of all the work and that's gone into it. And I think it's a great setup for our planning session to now really take the strategic plan and to really put this in, how this applies to the goals that we have identified and really defining that. I think it's so important for us to continue to look at this throughout the year so that we really stay focused on it. And I think I'm excited about this year and how we're talking about having a planning session together as board and really focusing on that. And then mid-year, doing this again so that we keep regrouping and deciding where we're at so that we can find to. On that note, I would also ask all of us with our calendars, so you can see how important it is to us to be able to have this planning session come July. Wade will have the revised, the forty-five day revised for the budget till we can look at that.
Is that the one Pam just asked us about?
Yes, I haven't seen any responses, but I, I look forward to it. And I'm looking at the cabinet as well for being willing to participate in that with us. I know it's a little more work, but I think it's gonna be time we'll spend and we'll help make our year go more smoothly for all of us and more productive. Thank you for all of that. I don't have anything else to add, but we are gonna stop next, we got the two thousand series on the biologic community else coming up. And on another note, the six thousand series, I haven't forgot about those. We'll put it on the agenda. My suggestion for all of us as a board is to maybe, I've been just kind of breaking it down. Because there's so many of them, but. It is. It's good reading, though. It's nice to, it's a good time to read this. It's obviously a lot of work, but. Yeah, I just have it out in the kitchen. I, I appreciate all the work. I know how much work went into it. So thank you for doing that.
Dr. Brady, do you want to keep recording for this thing? Yes, we're gonna record through this. This is the last piece. Okay, I'll open.
And then we'll go into. So. Thank you very much. So our next is the discussion of board policy two thousand. So we opted not to have a pre subcommittee by law meeting and just do a meeting here. And I feel like having read through them, it's like a very different change. My suggestion, do you all have to go? Why don't we get through one by one again and see what's gonna happen and what we have. And then we'll bring them back for our first.
We're, that's just because we're not looking at the board governance, but now we're only looking at.
No, so I had, I'm sorry, I'm just on the two thousand.
Yeah.
Um, we're not sure where the first couple of lines came from on here that they sort of. Right. So, so those, and, and I think this could have been from one of our training sessions when, when they were working with us as a cabinet on.
How to use.
Right, how to use the system. Like, that's where we think, because I, we, we all looked at that and we were like, where did that come from? But we think that was part of the training. So of course, that's.
So the first two lines are a delete. Does anybody have any other comments for the policy two thousand concepts and rules?
No, just one quick question. The word pending, is this the one that we're actually looking at now? Is it going to be the days of this?
But this is what we would adopt.
Can I say this is kind of an interesting thing because it was never part of the district policies before. It's just, you know, they exist as the two thousand policies through CSBA, but for some reason, the district didn't have them, like, it didn't work. So.
Great.
It was a lot of crossover.
I thought, there was.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I assumed that these were in our district. That we were gonna be seeing. Okay, policy two one one zero superintendent responsibilities and duties. Does anybody have any changes or?
Yeah, ju- just a quick kind of global statement question for everybody. Because this is something I talked about very often before, and I think we talked about this. I was interested in kind of like, I, I like all these policies in general. I don't have any specific changes to any of these. I guess my global statement was, I would like to see somewhere, whether we put it in the nine thousands or we put it in board governance, probably board governance or here, a more detailed list of the expectations that we have of the superintendent vis a vis the, how we operate as a board, right?
I'll make the suggestion.
Yeah. That's fine. I just wanted to state it here. So we're all clear that, and I'll look for that at the board.
All right. So I'm gonna jump ahead and if you have no changes to the two thousand, does anybody have any changes to any of these?
I, I just thought that there was a lot of duplication of things, but that I have no objection to any of them.
I have one change.
What?
Nobody have any other? My change would be. It's on two one four zero. Since the discussion, the paragraph, the second from the last paragraph, discussion shall include the establishment that performance goals for the next year. And that's just the technicality that in that evaluation, we wouldn't be doing it then. So it would be following the evaluation, the the superintendent for education will need to establish the performance goals for the next year. That's my only change.
So just so them clear on the change. So maybe. I have, I have one thing I can't, I don't have a line. I can't find it. Is that striking? I'll do it for first reading.
One thing, which is this is a, a more general thing that happened with the, the other section of the biologs as well, which is just a expansion of permanent usage throughout, which I imagine would be.
You're exactly right.
Same comment.
You're exactly right. So it'll be the entire.
Okay, if there's no other comments on the two thousand, we'll bring it back for first reading. Or if you want to, I'll have first reading and add that as well. And at that time, if you want to wave, you can leave it at that time.
We can go to, yeah, we can wave it. Yeah.
So I will close this post session. It is three thirty-one and we will, I mean, study session is three thirty-one and then we'll have the term study session and we'll go to the close session.
Do we stand this zoom?